Well, good evening, everyone. I would like to call to order the regularly scheduled city council meeting for the city of Nisswa. It is Wednesday, October 17th, 2018. It is 7:01 PM. Would you all join me for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, welcome again. We will go through the consent calendar, and then the next item on the agenda will be open forum. So, has council had a chance to look at consent calendar? Any questions?
I'd move the consent.
Is there a second to that?
I'll second that.
There is a second by Ryan. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed? Motion carries. Item C on the agenda, open forum. Is there anyone here tonight to speak to the council in the city outside of what is on our agenda? And it looks like there is. The blue light is on. You're ready to go. There you go.
Okay. I would assume that you have seen what's happened on the west side of Wendy's.
Can you please state your name? Thank you. Hi, Woody.
Woody Hacker. Hacker. On the west side of Wendy's, they clear-cut, I can't, three, four, or five acres. I can't say exactly how many, but it is absolute disaster. And it's pathetic that this is allowed to happen in Nisswa because it's destroying the ambience and character and aesthetic quality of Nisswa. And if this continues, then Nisswa is going to look just like Baxter. It's going to have all these commercial junk sitting all over with no trees. And you have the authority to do something about this in conjunction with the planning commission. So, we're going to proceed with this, and we're going to try to allow development. I do not want to eliminate development, but I do not want to destroy the ambience of Nisswa. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Woody. S.O. what?
S.O.
Just a joke.
In addition to what Woody was talking about, I spoke to P&amp;Z, and I think you guys had points in time where I'm concerned about the infrastructure of roads and the development of the city of Nisswa. We talked about the Smiley Road and cramming stuff in, and now we're talking about, well, we're going to have to put some backage roads in to get around, et cetera, et cetera. I envision in my mind at some point a frontage road on the west side of 371. It's going to also go up and service some of those businesses, of which it's going to come back out onto 77 somewhere. Start letting buildings develop on that north and/or south side of 77. It's going to close off where a potential backage road or frontage road would go. I just asked that the council and the Planning and Zoning Commission to be conscious of future planning and how this is going to all piece together. So, just let stuff happen, and we'll figure it out later. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Anyone else this evening? Hearing done. We'll close the open forum and move on to reports. First report, city administrator. Jenny, what do you have for us this evening?
Good evening, members of the council. I don't have anything outside of the new business items for tonight, and I'll be happy to help when those items come up, but otherwise happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay. Next on the D2, the city attorney. Mr. Pearson, do you have anything?
Thank you, mayor and council. On my spot on the agenda here is reference to an ongoing, what I would call nuisance condition in the city at 26130 Birch Avenue. I think in your packet is a copy of a letter I recently sent to that landowner. That's follow-up on other correspondence that city staff has had with that landowner in an attempt to get his attention to this condition. You might recall, a couple council meetings ago, we discussed possible options with respect to this. I think that he was contacted after that meeting by Desmond with a request that we'd be able to go on-site and inspect that to find out about the viability of that structure. I think that conversation probably didn't get responded to. This letter that you see in your packet dated October 4th as of now has not been responded to. So, that's what I have for an update on that. As far as questions, I'm here for that. We can certainly talk about a process that we would undertake going forward.
Would you touch on that for us?
Please.
Yeah. There are numerous ways we can go about this. One would involve potentially a civil complaint, touching on zoning ordinances violations. Another maybe more effective and expeditious way to get attention to this is a statutory nuisance process that can be invoked by the city, where we declare this to be a nuisance condition. That also involves district court process, but it's more of a short circuit than a civil complaint would be. My recommendation is that, because it's difficult to kind of speak to that orally here, that I put together a memo for you about those two options in time for your packet in November, and then we have ability for you to digest that. We can then talk more about go-forward options, if that makes sense.
We've had a complaint from the next-door neighbors. You look out their bedroom window, and it looks right into the parcel we're talking about here. He has not been very helpful. He won't let us onto the property. We've got to do something sooner or later. Otherwise, it's just going to go downhill even further. Has anybody been up there to see this place?
Uh huh.
It's a mess. And he, I understand from Desmond that he had at one time requested a permit to rehabilitate the thing, and that's what started us to say, we don't know if you can rehabilitate it, and we want to come in and check it out to see if it can be done. He won't let us do that. So, my suggestion, and I think the P&amp;Z is getting a little frustrated too. We seem to be impotent in what we can do. If we can decide to do something at the next meeting and get the ball rolling, I think the people who live next door to this house would be very happy to see something happening.
Tom, what has to be, and I know you're going to send a memo on it, so we could look at it, but, you know, if we're going to go to court, so to speak, if we take that route where we end up in district court and go the nuisance route through the state statute, do we have any, do we have enough complaints on the property to say it is a nuisance? Or, since we're looking at, I mean, I mean, we've got the one neighbor that has to look at it, and it is an ISO. I grant it, it is. But, how much more are we going to have to have, which I understand would be something we'd look at in the memo and that? You don't want to just go file something with the court and have it tossed out either.
It's really a nuisance abatement process, John. It gets noticed to the landowner with the ability to contest that in court, that finding by the city council. We're only as good as the information we know we have in the file, which is, I think we have some picture evidence, photographic evidence that's been taken. I forget the source of where that came from. What our eyeballs can tell us, because we've not been able to do a formal inspection like we wanted to do from an engineering standpoint. So, admittedly, that becomes somewhat difficult fact-wise because of the information we don't have. But, we would, to augment what we've already got, we would take more of at least pictorial evidence of that and put that as part of the process.
Tom, when you speak, could you turn your microphone on and pull it up so people could possibly hear you a little better?
Sorry about that.
It's okay.
Didn't realize it wasn't on. So, if it makes sense, I'll put something together with some options, hopefully for you to decide on an action item at the next council meeting. If it becomes going down the statutory nuisance abatement path, then I'll tell you how that goes and what you can look at for timeframes.
Can we get that before the next P&amp;Z meeting?
You sure can.
Cool.
Yeah. I'll put something together for you here, if not by the end of the week, then before the middle of next week.
Awesome. Thank you.
That concludes my report unless there are questions.
Okay. D3, the city engineer. Mr. Hallen.
Good evening. Just a quick update. Last week, and I remember we had a lot of rain, so the topsoil was in place with the 2018 projects, but that is commencing here yesterday and today, along with mailbox supports. The website was updated today to essentially inform the public that, you know, whether, you know, we're looking, you know, the city is looking to complete, you know, the project, you know, this week and through next week. You know, the two minutes has all been placed now for a couple, well, actually, three weeks. But, last week, you know, no topsoil was placed, but that has now started, and, you know, we're looking to wrap things up towards the end of next week.
Question I have for you, and I saw they were working on the topsoil. Does that get compacted at all? A question, or how does it, it's pretty loamy and loose sort of a product, you know, versus, say, class five, where on other road projects, they put class five in there, and they'll run it with a packer and pack it in. This is loose, and obviously we could get a heavy rain or heavy rains, and does, is there something that's going to kind of hold that in place at all?
Well, yes, there, as part of the topsoil placement, then there's the cedar, excuse me, seeding, the fertilizer, and then the, you know, I'll call it the mulch that goes on top, because we're almost into dormant seeding now. That seed really is going to sit there until next year before it germinates. So, like you say, there will be a multi-material placed over the top.
Okay.
Protector. And as much for also, you know, wind erosion, just getting that blown off of it, you know, if it happens to dry out.
Uh huh. Okay, so there is a mulch that goes over it. Thank, yeah, thank you.
Yep.
Anything else? The city engineer?
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mark. New business this evening. E1, public hearing resolution vacating a city road requested by Lee and Penny Anderson. And we have information for that in our packets. Desmond?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we open the public hearing.
Sure. Sir, we need a second for that?
I'll second.
Okay. Desmond?
Good evening, council. This is a request for a street vacation. The subject, street to be vacated, it's actually two, the first one being Nisswa Avenue, the second one being Nisswa Circle. They are contiguous. The area of vacation is approximately 70 feet northwest of the intersection of Nisswa Circle and Nisswa Avenue. There are three property owners essentially involved with this request, Lee and Penny Anderson, the Newells, and Andy Anderson. All three have signed the petition requesting this vacation. This has moved forward to the Public Works Committee and to the Planning and Zoning Commission, both of which have recommended approval on this proposed vacation. So, with that, unless there's any questions that the council has of me, that concludes my presentation.
Okay. Council? Comments? Questions?
Mr. Mayor, there were a couple of questions that came up on the P&amp;Z level about the vacation. One, I've referred to the city attorney here to check out. It appears that there's more than one woman's name on the documents, and we wanted to make sure that that was correct. And legal council's looking it over. I don't know if he's come to conclusion or not.
No, I haven't. The application lists the female applicant as Penny, and the title documents that underlie it, including a deed from 2005, identify a female named Catherine. I don't know if they're one and the same.
I do believe the applicants here are representative that could respond to that.
Yeah, yeah.
There's one question. Then, there was a second question about the, when the turnover occurs. We asked the city attorney to confirm the original easement orders. Were they transferred in the sale of the property, or does easement go to somebody other than the current property owner? Just a legal question. We didn't know.
Generally, an easement stays with the property, not the owner.
That's what we're wondering.
Runs with the land typically, depending on how it's articulated. But, we're careful in this situation, in a petition like this, not to determine title issues. If we grant the vacation, which is what is being proposed here, then we're silent on title issues, including who the land reverts to, the land that's being vacated. So, I think I would just defer generally to that.
That's what I'll worry about it.
The issues of title and who owns that land is for another time and another place and for city council.
At least we brought it up.
Anyone else? Council members?
Desmond, just to, where does, just in kind of general terms, where does the city road end and then the vacated road start?
Essentially, I have an exhibit of that. I don't know if you can see, thank you. Thank you very much. The road coming in, it's approximately, or Nisswa Avenue, I'm sorry, and it's approximately 70 feet northwest of that point in which the vacated rideaway starts, which is, I believe, Lot 2 of the Nisswa Lake Estates subdivision. So, you will be able to pull into the subdivision and remain on a public street.
Okay. Thank you. John? Gary?
Do we have a, snow plowing wise, we're not plowing beyond that point then, right? Did they make allowances for that? Is that understood, or what are we doing?
Yeah.
Yeah.
They're maintaining it.
They're maintaining it, right. Okay.
There's no further questions? Would entertain the motion?
I'll move we close the public hearing.
Okay.
Seconded.
Seconded by Ryan.
I'll make a motion that we accept the resolution for vacating the city road requested by Lee and Penny Anderson as presented.
Second.
Seconded by Jacobson. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing done. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed? Motion carries. Item E2, recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission to adopt an ordinance amendment for stormwater protection.
Thank you. This is an ordinance that is intended to essentially put all stormwater management issues that we currently have on the books in the same location. So, it's a little bit more user-friendly to those looking through the ordinance, so that they can easily identify what kind of improvements that they will need to make when they're preparing a site for development. I don't believe there's anything new in this ordinance. There's some minor wordsmithing changes here and there, but I do not believe there's any new standards associated with what is before you tonight. So, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those questions for you. Planning Commission, Ann Lofman, Woody Hacker, and Ann Beaver, they all have all worked very hard on these ordinance amendments, and this is a first of a few that will be before you in the next few months.
So, if you could clarify for me and possibly the council, Desmond, there's a lot of highlighted yellow.
Yeah.
And are those items that are being moved to a new area, or is that all new verbiage?
Those are primarily areas that are being moved under new subheadings. So, essentially, it's being deleted from one portion of the ordinance, but it's being added to another portion of the ordinance.
But it's, so it's, excuse me, it's not being added. It's currently there.
Correct.
You were indicating.
Yes.
And we're looking to relocate it.
Yeah.
Reorganize.
Yeah, you'll notice there's a lot of strike-throughs as well, and most of that is just simply moving it over to the new sections.
Okay.
Just makes it easier for people to go to one spot to find what they're looking for, rather than going through a whole bunch of ordinances. Mr. Mayor, if there are no questions, I'd move the approval of the ordinance changes presented by the staff.
Sir, second?
Second.
Seconded by Johnson. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed?
Aye.
Sorry.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we authorize the city administrator to publish a seminary ordinance for the newspapers.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed? Motion carries. Next on the agenda this evening is item E3, recommendation from Planning and Zoning Commission to adopt an ordinance amendment for resort expansion. Desmond, yep?
Thank you, mayor. Yes, the primary purpose of this ordinance is to make the language of the zoning ordinance clear and more concise. We are also looking to align the city's resort density standards with the provisions outlined in the model shoreland ordinance of the state. And also, another portion of this ordinance is to reclassify the streams to be consistent with the DNR classifications of streams for the entire state. So, you will notice that there are some areas that are highlighted. Some of the things that are changing in this proposal are the Cullen Creek is being proposed to be a remote section, and Lazy Brook is proposed to be a tributary. Bishop's Creek is also proposed to be a tributary. Currently, under our standards right now, we just identify those as being natural environment, which doesn't exist in the state's scheme of classifications. So, with that, we are also looking at amending the standards, if you will, for the density, so that the overall density for a given development with their frontage of lake shore and the size of the development doesn't exceed what is permitted in the shoreland ordinance. Right now, we have a fairly straightforward way that addresses it. It's .125 dwelling units per acre in the first tier. So, this table that we have here is taken directly out of the model shoreland ordinance. And then, one additional things, one other additional element of this is we are looking to include a requirement for open space within our resort development, and this would pertain to expansions or potentially maybe a future resort that would require at least 50% of the area to be reserved as open space. Again, these are standards that are within the model shoreland ordinance for commercial PUDs or residential PUDs. One other element that we are looking at revising is the number of spaces for mooring and docking at resort developments, and that would be limited to one dwelling unit per site, or one docking space per dwelling unit or lodging this room. And with that, so if you had 50 rooms, you could have 50 docking spaces. So, and this is, we had a question about whether that would allow for additional docking spaces for other kinds of uses. I provided maybe essentially some alternative language that the Plant, that Planning Commission has not yet seen this, but I prepared this earlier today. Essentially, what it would do is kind of separate that out, so that it limited it to the one space for, per dwelling unit for the continuous docking spaces. And then also had a second section that would allow for some short-term docking for resorts that had food service, restaurants, bars, and things of that nature, where they are having customers come off the water and coming to the service-oriented businesses there. So, anyhow, like I said, the Plant Commission hasn't seen that, but that is something that the commission, I'm sorry, the council could consider, or send it back down to the commission if they feel they would like to have the commission look at that language before making a decision on it. So, and that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. So, how does this mesh with what the DNR, with what their regulations are and so on? Because, I think of a resort, and if it has 75 or 100 units, obviously, well, obviously, I'm not sure that the DNR would approve that. And so, where do we, or even if they had 200 units?
Sure.
That's mission, are you sure they're going to get 200 docks?
Within tier one, though.
Yeah, within tier one.
Tier one.
It is very, it's completely consistent with that. It's a one-to-one ratio.
Okay.
One room, one docking slip, if you will.
Okay, okay. Thank you for that clarification. Counsel?
On the continuous docking spaces, the one thing, it says the resort license may also have one dock for personal use. Is that what the DNR is asking for, or is that?
That's already in our current ordinance.
Okay.
So, but this has gone before the DNR for their review, and they would recommend it in its current form as provided to you tonight. They provided some red lines and comments and such to the ordinance that we prepared, and that is reflective of the document before you tonight.
Okay. Anyone else? Is there a motion?
I guess I would like to throw out, this was a lot of information to try and peruse through from Friday. peruse through from Friday to now. I'm not comfortable with it, but, so I personally would like to table it, but if the rest of the council here feels that they are comfortable with it, I would just abstain my vote. But I can't talk to Jenny too, and I don't know if this is just a one-time thing, but I didn't find I had enough time to really figure out what's exactly going on here. And, you know, you got the weekend, which you can't talk to anybody, and then you have a busy week, and so that's, that's where I'm at on it. So.
I would echo that, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to, actually, I'd like to see it go back to the Planning and Zoning Commission, this one, just so that that would probably be an easier place to ask questions and go through it and formulate questions, give them a list of the questions I have, and then they can address it. I guess my concern is that, on one hand, we want people to not, or commercial entities of any kind to build in that Tier 1. We'd like to see them move it back further to help preserve the lakefront and stuff. And then we're, it almost seems like we're penalizing them with docking space if they do that. So I, and I might be completely wrong, but again, I just haven't had time to read through all the legalese in it and everything, so.
Would it make sense to put together a workshop with both groups to discuss this? Or is it not seen as that big of a deal?
I think the only question is, is in the Tier 1, Tier 2, what you're talking about. I think everything else is probably pretty good shape. If you want to send it back to the P&amp;Z, that's probably the best spot to go. They put a lot of time and effort into this.
Yep.
But if you're not comfortable with it, we can look at it again.
Well, I do think, you know, I don't know what consideration was given to it, and I certainly respect the time. I do think it is a good question, you know, if hypothetically, a resort had nothing in Tier 1, and it was all behind Tier 1, would they have any docks?
Refresh my memory, is that a DNR requirement, or is that ours?
That is in the Shoreland Model Ordinance, yes.
Yeah.
But is it a law, or is it a request?
It's, it's, the Shoreland Model Ordinance is more of a policy document that is out there, put out by the DNR, and then this, you know, the city can adopt it in its entirety, or, but that's what they would like to see, you know, done throughout the state.
But we can choose which parts of those, just like policies to adopt, or amend it, or alter it, or so.
Yeah.
All right.
You can, to a certain extent, until you come up to a project, you need a DNR approval, and they can say, well, you didn't do what you were supposed to do before, so it's a velvet hammer.
In the 609 chapter, there's a coherent statute, but it doesn't apply to the state.
Okay. So council, what would we like to do?
I would like to make a motion to table this matter for the November meeting, and send it back to Planning and Zoning, and have council members that have questions, or the public that have questions about it, to get those in writing to P&amp;Z so they can get answered at the next meeting, if possible.
I'll second that motion. No more time to get through it.
Discussion, discussion on the motion. I have a, my concern with that is, and I'm not, certainly not opposed to it, but my concern is, when you send something back without, with very vague thoughts, and to say, you know, get your questions to them, I don't know that, I don't know how often that really happens. And so then are we, are we then wasting their time? If there isn't, if there isn't a hard and fast specific item with particular thoughts to it to revisit, what would really be revisited?
If you don't take the opportunity to put those questions forward to them in writing, or show up at the P&amp;Z meeting and voice them straight out to the board and have them answered that way. If we don't, if a person doesn't take that opportunity, then when the ordinance is passed, they get to live with it, don't want to hear any complaining later. But I-
So is our marching orders what?
What I'd like to-
You're sending it back for P&amp;Z for what?
I can guarantee you that.
Just for questions?
I have questions. I have questions about it. I have issues with certain languages, but I need, I want to put it all in writing and give it to P&amp;Z, so they have an opportunity to look at it. And then I will be at the P&amp;Z meeting, if at all possible, to ask those questions and get those questions answered, then we can bring it back in November. That's why I'm saying, if you've got a question, not everybody can be at the Planning and Zoning meeting, you know, it doesn't fall in their work schedule. Put it in writing, or an email, forward it to Desmond, and let Woody and the board look at it, and then they can, they can come up with an answer and get back to you, or get back to us, on what their thought process was, why they're doing it that way, et cetera. And I just don't want a hamstring, especially if you, if you come up to like a small resort, you know, and I build on my backlot, and I, you know, have a nice winterized area and stuff, and all of a sudden I can't park a, you know, let my guests park, you know, if a person comes up and they rent a condominium on a backlot that holds 20 people, 15, 12 people, and they bring up the pontoon boat, the ski boat, and the fishing boat, only to find out, boy, I don't have docking space for three boats, because I don't have enough, you know? That could be an issue, so.
I think the motion is to table and go to the P&amp;Z.
Yes.
Table, you, when you table something that should be tabled to some date, do you want to come back at the November meeting?
Correct. That's what I said.
Okay.
Yep.
And Ross?
It's an important issue for resorts, and I just don't feel comfortable, you know, I just want to make sure that I'm comfortable in what it's doing for the small, and obviously that's a big part of our tourism, so that's, that's just where I'm, and the three, four days just wasn't enough for me to be comfortable with something. That's why I'm asking for it.
Thank you. Okay. Any other questions before we vote?
All right, one more question. Does this, part of the reason I was thinking of sending it back was, does this revision kind of need to go back to Planning and Zoning for them to look at, or, that was part of, that was the one reason I thought of sending it back, is they hadn't seen this yet. Is that, is that something that's kind of, you know, they, important or not?
You know, I, it is important. The language was provided to show that there could be a different way to approach that one section of the ordinance.
Maybe that can get higher value.
It does appear to be consistent with the Shoreland Model Ordinance, in the way that it's provided, but, true, the, I mean, the Planning Commission has not seen it.
And as I did earlier this week, I'll get with Desmond and let you know what questions I have before your meeting, so you guys can get all your, you know, look through it, get the ducks in the row, and get the, so it takes up as little time as possible.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion to table carries. Item E4, Partial Payment Application Number 1 from Knife River Corporation for the 2018 street improvements.
Question. For St. Campbell Road, the amount that county was going to give us, has that been paid, or is that in the future yet?
We will bill the county for their portion.
Okay, that's coming, then.
Correct, it's coming, so I would like, once I have approval for the payment request for Knife River, then we will follow with a, an invoice to the county for their portion of that, less some retainage, and then have that closed out before the end of the year.
And this partial payment, Jenny, about what percentage of the total is this?
I believe it's 83%.
83% or so?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
So there are some dollars that are unpaid, that can help cover a little bit of the county's portion for the moment.
Correct.
So we're not paying out more than 100% or?
Exactly, yes.
Okay, very good. Any other questions? Motion?
Just one question is, is, I'm assuming this is, you know, Tom and Mark Allen have kind of gone through this and verified.
Oh, yes, this was put together by Justin, I think. Mark verified all the numbers and all the information that, yes.
I assume that, I just would like to hear it verbally, so.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
I need a motion.
We didn't even get a motion, hardly.
I'll make a motion if we-
Somebody, please do that.
I'll make a motion that we make the partial payment application from Knife River, we pay according to the partial payment application from Knife River Corporation as presented.
Second. Second by Jacobson. Discussion on the motion. Now, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item E5, Recommendation from the Public Works Committee Adopting Engineering Warrants Policy. And we have that in our packet. Is there any discussion on that before we get?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question of the, of the committee. These are warrants that must be present in order to have an engineer look at our roads and design the roads. I looked at the warrants, there are 21 of them here. I guess, when I read the 21, I can't think of one activity or one road that we could do on our own. All of them would have to be done by an engineer. There's so many of these warrants here. Right-of-way issues, subgrade corrections, water being or fire protection, bicycle use, drainage improvements, underground storm sewer, bonding, if there's bonding needed to pay for it, safety issues. I guess my question is, what's, what's not needed?
We have, well, the road by Fritz's Resort, for example, was one that engineering wasn't used on, that was just done. That was one. Again, this is a policy.
Aye.
Okay. And with some of those concerns, a lot of these concerns were things that Anderson Brothers, when we spoke with them at the meeting, we had last, what was that, last year already?
Maybe even two years ago.
Yeah. These are a lot, most, almost, almost every one of these things, items, with the, not the bonding issue, that, but almost every one of these items were something that they wouldn't touch it. They would not feel comfortable doing it if, because it would require engineering, you That's why these items are in here. There may even be other items. I know that there was a couple other ones that were, a couple that we didn't see, and we added, like the county, we had the state in there if we're cooperating, and the county, so we added that. But it is, I mean, there could actually potentially be even more. And if, I think, Tom, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think, even if we pass it as a policy, if we have a road come up like we had with Lower Cullen, or that, I don't even know what it's called anymore, the section that keeps going, it's just a matter of reclaiming and resurfacing, we aren't locked into a policy.
Correct.
So we could still pull that at that time. Our, our goal was to give direction to future councils, and to the council, now that, hey, these are things that need to happen. If these things need to happen, so to speak, you know, gives you a guidance as a tool.
I was just surprised what I read, basically, 95 to 96% of all roads that we will do have to be engineered.
Yeah.
That's basically what it's, we have-
Well, I don't know about has, have to be engineered.
You don't, again, it's a policy.
Again, this is just guidance, it's a policy, it's a tool.
It's a policy, but if you have a policy, either follow it, or the policy's no good.
And, you know, I'd like to interject right there. I totally agree with what Don is saying here. This may be, to me, this may be a list that should, that Public Works may want to have, but to hogtie everything, there's, you know, there's no way to get around doing anything without this, without big discussions.
It's still ultimately up to the council to determine whether or not to have the engineering. Just because a couple of the boxes are checked from the warrants, doesn't mean we have to do it.
And on top of that, Mr. Jacobson, I believe, is correct. When there's a policy in place, the first thing that happens, and I've seen it happen, is, well, our policy says we have to do this. So then automatically, we're hogtied. So I, I, I'm in agreeance with, with where Mr. Jacobson's at here, I don't-
I don't know if I'd use the word hogtied, but it just seems to be, of all the warrants that are listed here, it's, it'd be very unusual to find a road that we didn't have to have engineering done on. And that's why with me, then we have somebody to blame if it goes wrong. If we do our own, then, then who do we blame? It's an internal thing.
But it sure adds a lot to the cost, if it's not necessary.
It can, it can. We don't have to do it.
That's, that's true, you don't have to.
Well, it's just, it's a, it's for guidance, for tool.
But future, future councils won't know what individuals were thinking when this was put together. It'll be pulled up, and they'll say, well, this is the policy. We don't know why it got put together the way it did, but while looking at this, I guess we don't have any choices. And I think that's a very important piece. New council members, as we were when we were new, do not know what was talked about five and 10 years ago, and why it was put together. And I think, for that reason, this is a very, this really hinders the city's ability to look at cost savings.
I guess, my, two questions I had with it, kind of along the same lines, is the cost of the project being $100,000, and the bonding part, because I think that, them two are, you know, limited, because most of the time, we're going to bond. If I go down this list, if I take what Don says, and I go down this list, I'd have a hard time not wanting to have it engineered, you know, for, for a lot of this stuff. I mean, you know, when you start talking, you know, stormwater and, and all this stuff, I, I look at it, go, I, I have a hard time not having that engineered. Where I see it as kind of limiting us is the two I talked about, the $100,000 and, and the bonding. That, that limit, so that's kind of where I'm coming from.
The $100,000 mark is, you have to take bids on that. So I believe that's the state law, correct? You have to take bids. In that case, you're going to have to put it out to bid, and you're going to have to have the specs put together, set forward, and done, in order to have those-
That makes sense.
-that, that done. We may not always have an Anderson Brothers that's willing to do that for free. We don't know that. One thing we could do is we could add the, you know, very prominently in the heading that this is to be used, this policy is to be used as a guideline.
I was going to suggest that we change the name to Warrants and Guidelines, and that makes it a little easier to change, if you want to do that. Once you have the word policy in there, it's a little more legalese, and you, you don't want to mess with it.
Again, I, it's, yeah, I mean, I-
It's a minor, minor thing.
I think I'd still take out bonding, because why would we not, even if we're bonding, why would we not still want to do that? But that makes sense on the $100,000.
But that is what it's saying, Ross. If we're bonding, we will have it engineered.
No, I'm saying, that's what I'm saying, though, is, if, if we're bonding, why wouldn't we want to have a road that can be done, not engineered, done, not engineered? I'm saying the opposite of what you're thinking. I mean, why would we not, if we're bonding for these roads, why would we not want that option to have a road that doesn't meet the rest of this stuff? Why would we not want that option to have, to have it done unengineered?
We're paying for lower, we're paying for lower Cullen.
We do, we do.
We're paying for lower Cullen out of the, out of the bond we currently have, but it's not going to be engineered.
But if I read this, it's saying that if we're bonding for a project, it has to be engineered.
Right.
None of these, none of these boxes, if they're checked, says we have to engineer it. This is just a guideline, to determine when.
Future councils won't know that.
If you change the guidelines, I'm fine. That was the only thing, I'd say that's the only thing I found was restricted.
Wordsmithing is, maybe seem insignificant, but I think it's a big change if you use guideline instead of policy.
Are we splitting here?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay.
If this was an effort from staff and from the Public Works Committee to start to come up with processes, and to be consistent in our approach to things, and so that's, that's where this- that's where this has come from, and I think that that was, um, a great first step in that. So, so whether that's, whether it's picked or not, I, you know, the intent is really to say, we'd like to have some guidelines for us to think about. This document should accompany every future road project, so we can say, this is what we vetted. Um, these are the things we looked at, and if there's one box checked, we can say, that's not necessary. If there's twelve, okay, maybe it's pretty clear. So, that was the spirit in which it was meant, which was created, so that's...
And I think that's us, I mean, I think that's absolutely needed, so.
Cause we're working towards doing that more.
I'll, I'll move the recommendation from the subcommittee to establish a warrants guidelines as presented.
Second. I would like to see the term warrants taken out. As I read the opening, in order to be consistent as to when it is necessary for the City of Nisswa to hire an engineer for design or observation of road projects, the following warrants for doing so. To me, that sounds like, that's an absolute.
Yeah.
And if that's the case, again, history will be lost and it will be automatic that, well, um, unless none of these are met, we have to hire an engineer. And I would also just wanted to mention, as far as the road project cost, we could have a three hundred thousand dollar street that doesn't need any engineering, and we wouldn't have to hire an engineer, it could be considered. So, to have a hundred thousand in there, I struggle with that as well.
They're, they're all things you look at, you don't have to do them, and that's, that's one thing I had, when I looked at the list, there, it's a nice list, but it covers ninety-five percent of what we do. But if you don't like what one road, uh, project is gonna do to your warrants, uh, guidelines, you don't have to do it. I, I, I made the motion, was there a second?
I seconded.
There was a second, okay. So, it's for warrants guidelines at this point.
Okay, any further discussion? Jenny, do you have a question about that?
I do. Can I clarify, Don, is it engineering guidelines or engineering warrants guidelines?
Warrants guidelines was the motion.
Okay.
Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nay. Motion carries. Second page. Item E6, Recommendation to Purchase Police Squad Car From the 2019 Budget. We had some discussion earlier about that. Do we want to table that to see if we can possibly do some of that out of the 2018 budget? Or how does everyone feel about that?
So, one idea I would have is if you are comfortable ordering the squad regardless, if I can have that approval, and then we'll work on what, if we can get it in 2018, we'll, we'll set aside the funds to do that. If not, we'll, we'll put it in 2018.
I'll make that motion if everyone's ready.
Yep.
I make the motion that we approve the purchase of a squad car, uh, now for the 2019, to be delivered in 2019, not to exceed the thirty-three thousand, five hundred dollars. Um, also giving the, that if we can pay for it out of our 2018 budget to do so, if not, then it falls to the 2019 budget.
I'll second that. Okay. Discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
Mayor and Council, I recommend that that should be a resolution, I think, um, rather than just a motion, because of the extent of the price and the variation and the budget issue, so I think there should be a resolution. Um, and if you're in favor of that, then I'm happy to put one together, or I can communicate with Jenny about how to do that. But I think that should be a, a written resolution. Two, um, I get concerned sometimes that the end user might want to see something that shows city council approval, rather than just an extract of minutes showing a motion approval.
Would delaying this a month to do that affect the purchase of the car?
Um, with, with the, the timeline right now of, of squads just being delayed, I, I mean, it, it's not the end of the world, so if, if you want to wait for that resolution, we can. We're just trying to get as early on the list as we can for next year, having it already being June probably of next year.
Tom, is there a way to proceed tonight and still do a resolution?
Yeah, um, that motion could be, that, that motion could be, um, altered to say a motion for a resolution with the same terms in it, including the variation as to 2018 versus 2019 budget and the cost not to exceed figures. And then the mayor and the city administrator will sign off on a written resolution that will prepare that follows that.
I'll... Do we, do we need to rescind what's been approved, or, or can we just amend it?
I think the motion maker can just essentially amend to make that, to say that that's in a form of a resolution.
I'll amend to say what he said.
Don't blame me a bit?
I'll second. I'll amend my second.
Second by Ree...
See why it's dangerous to have an attorney at a meeting?
Dangerous to have a group of people together in a meeting. Um, discussion on this motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item E7, Spirits of Nisswa Pay Change Request For Nancy Schroeder.
Mr. Mayor, comment?
Yes.
Um, I don't know Nancy, so my comments are not for her, but apparently the recommendation is to skip two steps, uh, go from step one to step four. And, uh, she's a valuable employee, apparently, and everything else, she's dependable, that's fine, I don't have a problem with that, lots of our employees are that way, too. My only thinking here is if we do this, it's an unusual step, it's four steps instead of one, that we should need to key, and the, uh, keyed at, that's something, uh, that's different. And in here, it says Nancy's job responsibilities have increased since her hire in February, and it lists some things that she's doing now that she wasn't hired to do back then. And I think any increase needs to be keyed to that idea, otherwise we can have other employees coming around and saying, well, I want a three or four step increase, too, because I'm a good worker. It's gotta be keyed to something, so I think I have to be very careful when we do this.
I, I agree, and that was the one reason I'm for this, is because that added responsibility of opening and closing, I think deserves, you know, deserves that, that raise.
I did talk, I asked about that same thing, Don, and what I understand is that Brian is putting together that, actually. Correct? He's putting together...
We got that memo.
Yes, and I don't know, based on our earlier conversation about getting emails or not, if, if you received that, but as part of this, so we'll have to work on that, figure out what's going on there. Um, but as part of this, yes, there is a process in place, um, for our Spirits of Nisswa and our Pickle Factory employees, um, to, um, to have an opportunity, because currently they're not able to be hired beyond step one. And if they demonstrate, um, exceptional, um, performance, and in this case, added responsibilities, um, having a, a timeline and an opportunity to be able to receive that increase, that's really the only time that would happen for them. Um, that's the new process in place. And in this instance, Brian would go through and he has a new form to document the performance evaluation and to, and to do that, so that it's justified, um, for that. Um, the increase would be no more than step four, um, for someone, so it would be somewhere in that two, three, four step range. But that's very important, um, to distinguish for that reason especially, um, to maintain, you know, fairness. But we have part-time employees that we'd like to try to keep for those businesses and, and maintain consistency. Turnover is really difficult, um, in those businesses, so that is, that is definitely a goal that we have, that process in place. Hopefully that answers a question.
Well, I'd move to request, and the reason that, for approval is job responsibilities have increased since original hire and, uh, as outlined in the presentation from staff.
I'll second. So, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. E9, Request To Change November City Council Meeting Date From The November 21st To No, To No...
E8.
Okay, great. I checked it off. Personnel Updates For October 2018. Well, that's why I did, cause there probably isn't, I'm sorry, there probably is a lot there. What do you have, Jenny?
Um, just, just two employees on the list, um, for this month, Nancy, which, which you've just approved, um, but she is listed here, just to have that itemized. And then Andy Schaefer, um, has been doing some great work at the Pickle, and Terry would like to move him into a server role, part-time as well as his bar back role, so that's reflective here as well.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the hire and position changes as presented.
Second. Seconded by Johnson. Discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. E9, Request To Change November City Council Meeting Date From The 21st To Monday The 29th Or Tuesday November 20th. This is due to Thanksgiving. Thoughts, Council?
Either one, fine.
Yeah. Did you get a consensus from us when you, you didn't get the responses?
Yeah, remember one of them.
Hmm, okay.
Put it out here.
Well, Don doesn't get his, isn't getting his emails.
That can be, yeah.
I can make any of them work.
So, that's the twen- nineteenth or twentieth, right?
Correct.
Twentieth is better for me, but...
That's fine. Move it to the twenties.
I'd be fine with the twentieth.
With the Vikings playing Monday night football.
No.
Do we need a motion?
Yeah.
Yes, that'd be great.
I'll make a motion that we change the November regular council meeting date to Tuesday, November 20th.
Second. Johnson. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. November 20th, 7:00 PM. E10, Grandview Lodge, Status Of Conditions Dated 10/4/18, Council Information. So, Jenny?
Um, this is just, um, a status of conditions document. I think the council has seen this already, just from other committee packets and whatnot, but just wanted to, I'll be providing this to the council going forward and just, so it's in your packet, and please let me know if you have any questions.
Okay. Has that, um, 1994 conditional use list that's not been completed, is that going to become part of this conditional use list, or are we, is it just going to be what is currently been approved here in the last month, I'll say?
Um, I haven't fully looked at all, what, all what those conditions are, but certainly having one document, keeping everything organized in one place would be, uh, most efficient for everyone. Um, but I haven't looked into too much detail, but, um, I can certainly by November have information either way of how we want to address those.
Are you looking at the conditional use permit, uh, conditions for everything?
Well, uh, you know, there's one part of me that thinks that maybe planning and zoning should review that.
We, we do have in our packet every month, there's a report in the back.
That goes all the way back to 1994?
Uh, it doesn't go back that far, but, uh, we, a couple of years, a couple of years back, yeah.
Well, there is, there's one that's been in discussion for probably a year and a half or so, and that goes back to 1994, and those are conditions that have not been met and are somewhat substantial, and, um...
You're talking Grandview?
Grandview.
Yeah, okay.
And so, you know, if, you know, if it's possible to add that to the conditions list as, uh, you know, I don't know if there's a legal piece to this or not, whether we can add it to this list, or if this is just, this is a very specific list tied to specific permits given in the last year or not, but I would like to see that any conditions that have not been met, probably going back to 1994, because we're aware of that, get on this list and that they're reviewed and gotten, taken care of. See that the enforcement happens. Cause I think that's only, only right. I mean, if there's agreements that have been made and, and agreement's broken, I think that we should, um...
And that's one thing that we were hoping, the, the planning commissioner was hoping we get an enforcement officer to do that. We'll see what happens.
Right. Well, there's a lot, I think there's, I think there's discussion, you know, to be had with that, um, because, yeah, we, we do need to figure that out.
Yep.
Since we're kind of on the subject, there's something I was gonna bring up during council members, but, um, I think it's appropriate to talk about it here. I am really struggling with our meeting last time and the whole, um, discussion that we had with the folks with East and West Linden here. Um, and I, and I think this plays into that, too. I mean, you know, the whole meeting, I'm sitting here, um, trying to figure out really what Grandview's done wrong. Um, and as far as I know now, and that's everything, is what that whole meeting was about, because we're talking, you know, was it about the road? Was it about these conditions to the, the current construction? Um, the, the meeting went for an hour and a half, people kind of had unlimited time. Um, you know, we were... I sat here thinking, what, really what has Grandview done wrong? And then we start, you know, we're challenging our lawyer here, you know, well, he's scared of Grandview. I'm thinking, why do we need a lawyer? We asked for our lawyer's, lawyer's advice, we asked for Tom's advice, and he came back and said, a lawyer's last resort. I absolutely agree with that. And, and I would ask anyone here, what has Grandview done that now requires us to get Tom involved? Um, you know, uh, Mr. Fear got up and, you know, he talked about, you know, in his line of work, having, having, uh, the company, whoever's the developer, Grandview in this case, it was Grandview, it wasn't whoever the developer, cause that's part of the problem, you know, that they pay for part of, um, compliance. I think that's a great idea, right up until when he said, and we all know they can afford it, or, you know, when he made that comment and everybody kind of, yeah, yeah, yeah. You know, I, I think that, um, so what we're saying is, is since Grandview's been successful, and since Grandview, let's, let's hit them up for that. Um, you know, I mean, where do you start and where do you stop with that? If you live on the lake, you've got some money, is there somewhere the city can, you know, it just, and even this going back to 1994 for, against Grandview, against stuff that met, why are we just picking, like, if we're gonna do that, then I think we should go back to all the conditions that haven't been met within the entire city and bring everybody up. We seem to be singling out Grandview, you know, and, I mean, it's, you know, we, we have a group of citizens that telling us we can't do business only in the summer on this. I, I, if we're, if we can only talk about this during the summer, this will take forever to get taken place.
And, and I think, and I, I hear you're, you're adding a little bit, Ross, but you're, you're...
I mean, people were able, there was no control of the meeting, people were able to, to say stuff from the audience. And, I mean, it took an hour and a half, and there's nothing that, that was heard that was really new. I mean, we're talking about Grandview dumping water, well, what does that have to do with that whole, you know, and, and I tried to speak at one time and it was closed down. I mean, I just think that meeting was very poorly ran. I think, you know, Grandview, we're all sitting here looking at, you know, a nine percent increase, and Grandview's investing millions into this, into this community, and I just feel the whole flavor of that was very, it, it was very anti, anti-Grandview, it put them, and I, it put them, I feel, in a very unfair light, and there was nothing to regulate what was being said, there was nothing, people could sit, I mean, compute, in the past, people had to come up to the mic to speak. And that meeting, you know, people got to just speak from, from the audience, they got to, you know, point at us up here and tell us, I, I just, that meeting was an absolutely, was very poorly ran, and it, it was unfavorable to Grandview. And, and I'm, and I'm sitting here and I, I just keep hearing this, well, let's go back after Grandview, back to 94. You know, you stated, well, I didn't know this was going on, I've been living in this community a long time. There, this isn't just Desmond. We have always had a compliance issue in the city. And, and now we're just saying, no, now we're gonna go Grandview, we're gonna go after Grandview, cause they make lots of money, so let's make, you know, from what I understand, um, Jenny, you were contacting the lawyer about drafting up, see if we can get Grandview to pay for compliance. up, see if we can get Grandview to pay for compliance. What are they going to, I mean, they haven't even done, they're not even done building yet, and we're already trying, you know, we're already trying to get lawyers involved. I just, I just thought it was a poor...
Ross, I need to cut you off here.
Oh, it'd be nice, so you'll cut me off. That's fine. I'm cut off. No, I'm cut off.
If your information was accurate, and you understood what was going on, it'd be one thing...
What information's not accurate?
I'd be glad to go through that with you after the meeting.
Well, let's go through it here. No.
So moving on on the agenda...
You stated at that meeting, Mr. Mayor, that you didn't know any of this was going on. You were on that committee.
What committee?
You were on the road committee or the study committee for the Springstead, or not Springstead. Jenny helped me here. Huh? The Westlinley Committee with the...
We are moving on, gentlemen.
You didn't even show up for a meeting. Never, that's fine, move on. Cut me off. Everyone else, that's fine.
Well, what the heck are you wanting to do? Just, you are so, you're losing it again.
I'm not losing it again.
You're losing it. Item F, Old Business, recommendation from the Public Works Committee, approval proposal for engineering design services for, from WSN for Smiley Road South. If we can regroup, would somebody give me their input?
I have a question of the committee's recommendation. I understand Smiley Road, but up, in the section of the road up by Schaefer's, where the county's plans show the access under the county road on the east side of Schaefer's rather than on the west side now? Is the study that you're asking our engineers to perform, taking that course and using that as a plot to extend Smiley, or just how is that going to work?
What this is discussed, what we went through with this and the committee's recommendation that we sent for your approval is that South Smiley is on the list for roads that has to get redone next year, or with this current, right?
Part of the bond.
Part of the bond.
Yes.
And the other question that was posed was, just like with Hazelwood, since there's sewer on part of it, do we want to do the engineering now to extend sewer to its, to the end of it, to its logical end? And that, so there's two separate questions there. The first, you know, we agree that we, you know, that we went through the engineering, went through the services and what's happening, and if we keep it as is to go ahead and approve to get the engineering done on Smiley for repaving, reclaiming the road. The sewer portion of it, it was the majority of, there was one abstention on the committee, but the majority of us said, because we don't know what's happening with the county, and because we don't know when the county will or won't be changing after their next 2019 improvements are going to do to County Road 13 intersection, and since it's possible that at some point in time in the future, probable, that if there's going to be a baggage road, there was no reason to look at extending sewer down South Smiley at this time. It can only go down a couple of, how many, can go to like Carrilla?
Yeah, maybe in that ballpark.
Is the max it can go, and if you go any further than that, then because of the depth of the mains and the drop in the, in the, you'd end up, the drop in the topography, you're going to end up having to put in pump stations. So we said, you know, nah, there's no reason to...
I'm not worried about that. This is the latest schematic I got from the county.
No, that is...
That's gone again?
You can absolutely, for right now, you can take the roundabout stuff and shred it. If I could, Don, just to clarify that for you? There will be, I'm sorry, there will be a baggage road at some time.
Well, that's my question.
Yes, is taking that into consideration. There will be no engineering of a baggage road.
Yes, we don't know where the input's going to be.
That will be dealt with at that point. But this is just to approve existing road. Jenny, Jenny, would you give us an update as to what is going to be happening there? Rather than...
Why don't you ask the committee chair?
Because you're, because you're way off from what I'm hearing.
No.
So let's get away from the city administrator. Jenny, would you please give us the update?
It would be very fair to say that the county is taking a step back from any major changes to access points on County 13 at this time. They're looking at widening roads, or, yeah, the road and turn lanes, things like that. So currently, the south end of 13 at Smiley Road, that road will stay the same as it is now. So that's why we're looking at getting approval for the engineering, so that we can, because that road needs to be repaired, so that we can do that. Whether there are changes that the county proposes at a future point in time, we don't know when or if that would be, and they don't know either. They're looking at that, but the best information we have is that the same access points are where they are at this point in time.
Well, then, my question is, the engineering study that we are being asked to approve tonight is for the existing location of the road, the existing one.
South, yes.
And the county says, maybe not next year, but maybe the year after that, or something like that?
No.
No?
They're talking maybe...
Several years down the road.
Years out, yes.
Okay. Well, that was my question. Didn't make any sense to do engineering if we're going to move the access point north of Schaefer or east of Schaefer's.
Absolutely, yep.
Okay. I guess I have to go to the Public Works Committee to find out what's going on. Okay, thank you.
And in fairness, he was answering that question.
We all have our own opinions.
I'm not sure what there was to misinterpret there.
So is there, so are we moving on, or do we want to have an argument? Why don't we put a workshop together to have an argument? Let's move this on. I'll make a motion that we accept the engineering recommendation or request by, put together by WSN for South Smiley Road.
Second. Okay. Just a question of Jenny, where does the money to pay for this come from? What fund, does that come from the...
This is included as part of our bond. We did incorporate costs for that, yes.
Okay.
Any further, well, actually, is there any questions regarding the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to council reports. Any reports due to your liaison positions? Don?
I think we talked about PNC tonight. I don't think I could add anything. We'll take a look at the information that you want at the next meeting. If anybody has any comments or any questions, please get them to Desmond in time, so we can take a look at them, and if you feel writing isn't good enough, that you need to be there in person, show up at the meeting. We'll listen.
Gary?
Thank you, Don. Nope, I'm good.
Ross?
I guess I would like to, since there's been questions to whether your mayor is living in town or not, and that you have to be living in town 30 days prior to the election, I would like to see some sort of proof, whether it be an affidavit from the landlord, cancel checks, that you are living in town and you were living in town 30 days prior to the upcoming election.
Okay, thank you. John?
I'd like to see, I mean, I'd like, are you going to provide that?
Thank you.
Are you going to provide that?
Yeah, I will.
Okay. Thank you.
Bye. We have our announcements and upcoming meetings dates listed. They will also, I'm sure, be posted for the public. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Second.
We are adjourned. Thank you, gentlemen.
Desmond had those?
He did.
I will, I will get with, I will write down my questions for Desmond on that, and I will get them to you and him, and then if Anna or Woody or somebody wants them to, we can do that. I just...